Ermeling?
Here.
Cronin?
Here.
Feeney?
Here.
Hardinger?
Here.
Violet?
Here.
Sagami?
Here.
And public comments, anybody in the public or on social media that wants to make a public comment? Anybody? Anybody? Who's online? Nate, are you on tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody got their hand up?
One has their hand up.
Anybody for public comments? Number two. And anybody for public comments? Number three. Minutes from previous meetings.
Motion to approve ordinance.
By Ermeling?
Second.
Second by Cronin. All those, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Reports minutes from boards, committees, and commissions. Planning Commission. Any questions? I always make a mistake here. I'm just gonna ask any questions from the board.
Public Works.
Public Works, Planning Commission. And Park and Rec, Planning Commission.
Move to acknowledge items fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, and nineteen currently.
By Feeney.
Morning. Second.
Second by Sagami. Any more on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Reports from departments, administrator. Anything more to add?
Well, my, yeah, so my report had the child protected on the building project. We did have Laura Morret from EBI here today to start tagging furniture that'll be moved into what, phase one of the move from this building. So phase one occurs starting Thursday, or starts, I should say, to get that furniture, furniture and boxes that we got filmed that move over there to be staged into the boardroom. Then furniture delivery starts next Monday with the new furniture and be focused on the first floor. We've put out information, turned out also, we had notified the board through an email about the plan to close, the way to access to the public or either building. It's Thursday and Friday, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of September, and then the following Thursday and Friday, which is, I believe, the sixth and seventh of October. Help us get settled in the new place. So we were open to deal for the public over there starting then, but again, as was explained in there, because of the absentee voting requirements, which was something else we hadn't necessarily thought of initially, and not getting into the situation of transporting ballots from one place to another, so they're all collected in one location, absentee voting will be taking place here through October. And we won't actually start having meetings over there until, the first one will be the twenty-fifth of October, or what's, what is, is open house for the housing, housing study, housing needs study for the county, for the North Central Regional Planning Commission, So, just kind of the overview of that, I know you've been given information on emails. There's still much detail being worked out over there, punch list for the office areas still contained a lot of touch-up on paint and clocking and things like that. And, but my end is focusing on those, you know, as quickly as they can. There's still things on the site, you've probably noticed as you go by. Still some curb removals and replacements to get done. Pavement is supposed to begin next week. These things are schedules and bottom line is that we won't give them substantial completion until we have paving on the, on the site as well. So, I guess one of the other things that really stuck out was that they have, they have put on garage star panels with white exterior rather than the tan that they're supposed to be for now, because they can't get the tan panels. So if you, if you see that east side of the, of the facility, their plan is that they have to swap them out. Apparently it's a shortage of the paint that goes into making those panels, so it's not our problem, it's their problem. And it's just a lot of extra work that they have to do eventually. Again, not our problem, but it's something that you may notice. Not sure you want any other, I guess the other thing would be our newsletter that we stepped out communication on last week as well. So we had in the newsletter, a two-page, or a single-sided one-page, or double-sided one-page, which is supposed to be hitting the mail this week, and primarily notifying the public about our building closures and signing up for the strategic plan, taking the survey, community survey, and the opportunity to sign up for focus groups. So we're gonna be monitoring that focus group signup and trying to get those groups set up for our facilitators, focus groups, which will be meeting the fifth, sixth, I'm sorry, the sixth, seventh, and eighth of October. Those will be here at this facility as well. So if you, once you receive that, I guess anybody who, make them aware, encourage them to sign up for the focus groups. The goal is actually, is obviously to have a mix of people from the community in that, involved in that. I'll also be talking with a group that Sarah Pinsonalt has been putting together for the business community here in the area, or in Weston, that is starting some kind of apparel thing where they're getting input and gonna talk about community events, but also wanna encourage them to be participating in the village's strategic planning effort as well. So, not sure I need to add anything more unless you have questions.
I just have one comment on this mail-out. I hope you checked the return address. Last two times the utility has mailed out cards and letters, they have Schofield, Wisconsin as a return address.
I don't know what, do they have, is there a return address on communications or something like that?
Well, you had a postcard once on our letter. I can't remember what the letter was, I got several comments on it. And it, it was from utilities, and the return address was Schofield, Wisconsin. And then you just had a card go out here, not very, one mailing, and again, it was Schofield, Wisconsin.
And that one with Kirsten Fish was Schofield, Wisconsin, too.
Right.
Printers have to be made aware or something, because they are just...
Well, then, not like that, I'm not sure how that works.
Honestly...
I'm looking at the printer.
If we, if we actually got that from a printer, I, I mean, we, we might as well have something in writing that if it comes back Schofield, we're not paying for it, you have to do it over.
Well, it was sent out, and I got several, you know. Because there are few people know that I'm real...
The Kirsten Fish one I caught, you know.
Has, has anyone received that mail-out yet today?
Nope.
Okay.
No, but...
Haven't got the mail yet today.
No. Jennifer said that she just was checking it online. That's okay.
Okay. Any more questions for Chief?
You know, I guess the only other thing I will say about the strategic plan, and again, there's a doodle poll out there, it looks to me like we are going to be having our session one on November, I have teeth, I think it's the sixteenth, from six to eight PM. That'd be a two-hour thing on a regular, like a, we get regular meeting time. I believe that's Tuesday of that week.
November sixteenth?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'll send out a confirmation, let's look at it, either that day or the following day. And then, November twenty-ninth looks to be the day we would have that session two, but it looks like sessions two and three are gonna have to be done on two separate days. I know it won't, it's a week to try to have that as a single session, I know there's scheduling, scheduling conference, it sounds like, from some, from several trustees, and that's, I guess the challenge is trying to get everybody together. I guess I can make some phone calls and just confirm that, but if you haven't taken the doodle poll, I appreciate if you would, although I know I got other feedback from trustee Hardinger and Mark about their availability, I think I just, I still need to hear from Jamie, I think, on the doodle poll, if you check your email, maybe?
Yeah. I filled out a availability.
Well, I think some people have not hit the minute.
Otherwise, just texted in or something, so that's what I did. I just texted you. With the Sarah Pinsonalt, I, I thought she, they were trying to get in with the village, and the village said they didn't have the time. So then they proceeded to move forward, and now why the change of heart? Why are we bringing them in? Are we trying to bring them in?
Just wanna notify, I'm gonna inform them about the strategic planning effort.
Okay.
I mean, otherwise, the other things they're doing within terms of our staffing and their capability to involve that, be involved with that.
I thought that was a good thing.
I think it's a good thing, too.
I thought, I, I don't know why staff needed to be part of it. I mean, just, they could've just morphed into, you know, a business group, because I think it's desperately needed. I think they, they need a voice, they need, yeah, that, that's good. Good.
What time was the sixteenth?
What's that?
What time was the sixteenth?
I think we're gonna have to do it on evening sixteen.
I volunteer on the sixteenth, on Wednesday.
All right, let's move on to twenty-one, clerk, Pam.
Nothing further.
Anything more with Pam? Okay. Finance, anything more with Jessica? Jessica, you wanna put in the ad?
Nope.
Okay. Erin E. S., welcome, chief.
I got my report in the packet. The only other thing I'd like to bring everybody to speed on is on the twenty, I was just looking at the date here, I think it's the twenty-ninth, yes, twenty-ninth of September, so next Thursday, we're gonna be doing a training burn on Birch Street, near the New Hinner Springs subdivision, so there's an older farmhouse there that will be burning down. We've been using it for quite a bit of training over the last several weeks, actually, but there will be active fire there.
Burn is, who's?
I honestly don't remember. I'd have to look back, I can't remember the owner's name.
Roland, you know? Is that the barn that's property? Who's, who's the property?
It's the one on the...
Yeah, it's currently owned by Heath. Oh. And then, but it was at the actual Hinner?
Yeah, no.
Oh, it is? Oh, wow. Wow.
What time are we doing it, Josh?
Uh, we, we start at eight, by the time we actually start burning is usually closer to nine. Takes us about an hour to get stuff set up and...
In the morning.
It should be burning by nine, and then it'll probably go into final burn, where we burn it all the way down. Usually that happens between noon and one-ish, kind of depends on things. The other thing I had was, there's the flex spending grants that came out from state DHS. We put in for a new UTV, to replace the UTV in Rib Mountain, that is actually on our CIP schedule to be replaced in 2025. We just heard back today that we are awarded roughly half of the amount that we put in for, so that'll come to our next safer board meeting, actually, to see how we wanna, I got a couple options for our board to see how we wanna move forward with that, but at least it would pay for half of that vehicle to be replaced, and then it could come off through CIP schedules, so. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Park and Rec?
I have a report in the packet, if anybody has some questions.
Short and sweet, planning development, Jen?
I have a report, but I did forget to put in that Roman and Scott have cleaned up the Burdette property.
They have what?
The Burdette property on, pardon?
Yes.
But we're having some reoccurring issues with it, so we will follow up.
Yeah, she's, she's already started to pile stuff back into the yard.
I, I'm not even gonna bother you guys, it's, it's one of my ways, after I get my car washed at Tommy's, I can't help it. And it's almost a day after.
It was the day after.
It's really a shame.
Yeah.
So we'll be looking at ways to, a different avenue there.
Okay. Twenty-six, chief two, chief one, chief A B.
I have a couple things. We set a record for the number of calls for service for the month of August, we had twenty-two-hundred-and-ninety. The village was at sixteen-twenty-two, that's on the high end, but the city had five-twenty-nine, which is about two-hundred more than average, so a lot of activity in the city, but we are continually getting higher and higher stat numbers. Want to put something on your radar, the homelessness we're dealing with weekly, it's probably gonna increase after talking to partners in Wassa that are really struggling with it. We did find a tent camp off a community center between that and the highway, so started thinking about, I think, the direction, the city of Wassa was, was difficult between all the community partners and essentially the police department's looking for direction from policymakers at the board level on direction, so I just wanna put that on your...
So with Wassa, getting that new person on, are they shoving them out, or are they trying to assist and help?
I think they're doing more assisting with that person.
That's what I thought, too.
Kinda too early to tell. I know she's helped a couple people, but we'll see how that goes long-term.
Is Limerick involved in this still?
I think he still is to some degree, but not like he was his full-time for a while.
Okay.
And then lastly, we had an officer stop a stolen vehicle in the parking lot of Pickens Dave, Pickens Dave last Friday. He became resistant, he fought with the officer, got him down to the ground, but needed help. The guy was bigger and stronger than our officer. We had a citizen, because the parking lot was packed. Female citizen came and helped, and she did a really, really phenomenal job. I reached out to her, and just kinda wanna give her some recognition, like a brief, something on the agenda for next month, if you guys are up for that, just say thank you and give her a certificate.
Wow.
It was really pretty cool, so, and it's a, it's a good story, and she was willing to, you know, some people are very private, but maybe we'll put together a couple of really quick video clips to see how much she helped, so, if you guys are okay with that?
You have that on video? You have that on video?
Yeah.
Body cams?
Yeah.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, the body cam was knocked off, we have a squad camera that caught most of it on the corner, so, but yeah, very, guy was math, dealing math, we made a bunch of arrests there, felony warrants, so it was a good arrest. So yeah, we'll look for that for, it must be in October, I can't remember.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Question for the chief? So like, I have one.
Yes.
So like, Friday, Saturday night, sometimes you hear maybe twenty cars rip, snorting around through the community, and it's like, is that pretty wild now, or what, what's going on? It's always the little ones with the coffee cans?
Yeah, I think the racing trend is coming back. It's a very popular year ago, and kinda got lost, but yeah, we're starting to...
Is there a corner we could sit and watch, or is that...
Our night crew is young and very, very ambitious when it comes to traffic enforcement.
I gotta tell you, I, I just, I listen and I pray I don't hear, you know, we have the windows open, it's a little cooler, and I just, I don't wanna hear that huge crash, because that sound really carries. It's just, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable when you hear it really going, so, yeah.
Where are they racing?
Everywhere, everywhere. I've been very fortunate, I mean, Hushang, I can't believe you can't hear it, unless your house is closed, but...
There was, there was a bunch of them in the marathon car on Saturday morning, because I was there, I was there probably about eight-thirty-nine o'clock.
In the morning or at night?
No, in the morning.
Oh, oh.
And they were parked by that restaurant, there was a, this obviously doesn't carry in there. They took coffee, and they made a lot of them, just taking off, getting off.
It was about eight-thirty-nine o'clock one night, and it's, it's amazing, because we laugh when we're out at night, because probably we're home, and there had to be twenty-five of them in the QuickTrip parking lot at Schofield Avenue.
Really?
And, yeah, and Birch. And I, I wanted, I tried to get my wife to, can we drive in and look at them? So I like looking at those cars, and she's just, are you crazy? Can I get in the middle of this? I, I truck handles corners pretty well. Oh, yeah. It's, they're, some are pretty cool. So, anyway, enough of that. Public Works, Michael?
I reported the packet and several other things on the agenda, so I don't need to hear me talk more right now, unless you want me to.
Okay, well, thank you. And technology.
Yep, I reported the packet, do you have any questions?
Nope. Got a question for Heath back there, the Hinners, their, their names. Do you remember their names? Their front names?
I don't, John, I don't...
Bill Hinner, Rita, Rita.
Rita.
Rita. All right, I'm sorry, her and I are just going back and forth. They were shoppers at twenty-nine forever, and they were quaint characters, and they were so much fun. They always came in together. They were just neat people. I really enjoyed them. Yeah, okay, technology, work product transmittals, twenty-nine, August building permits. What's your pleasure? Move to... By Feeney?
Second.
Second by Ermeling. Anything on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Consent agenda. I'm hearing nobody wants to pull anything out of here, that's fantastic.
Listen to a group item number thirty-one through thirty-seven.
All right, thirty-one through thirty-seven by Cronin, second by Feeney. On the question, just wait a minute, was there gonna be a poll on tonight? No? Okay, we're good?
I give you a second.
Oh, no, I, I came with my short time. I forgot that we had a joint meeting.
No, so...
We're all good?
We are good.
Okay, good.
We got the documentation that we need.
Excellent, good job. So, motion by Cronin, second by Feeney. Any more on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Ordances, none. Resolutions, none. Unfinished business, update on American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds. Hearing none?
So...
Order forty, oh, I'm sorry.
If you wanna pass, if you wanna just pass it, then that's...
Oh, that's right, you have this big sheet here, yeah.
We had a little discussion at the...
Do we have summonees for the audience here?
I got some extra ones.
Yep, 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 yep. Sean, Roland?
Sean already has one.
All right. Eric, right? Yep, Eric.
You already have that.
This is the one calling right here. I know, big time, right there. Keep the guy. Good guy. From Merrill, right?
I have two left.
We got two. I'll share it. Everybody have one? All right, thank you.
Everybody who wants one, I guess.
All right.
So at finance, we had a couple items, joint financing board meeting, a couple items that we, action on allocating ARPA funds for, so we have this on as a recurring item, and, and, you know, just, we're just talking about still costs that may be eligible, or we may wanna consider eligible to utilize these funds for. This list is pretty much the same as it's been in terms of items. I think we're getting some updated numbers based on what happened with the municipal building exterior improvements. That one's probably gonna be changing here shortly, once we wanna keep it on there, which is meant to be until 2026, some may cleverly change. Right, still have a salt shed to take care of, but, okay, still have a salt shed to take care of in terms of the municipal building, I know there's an item on this, on both of these things later on the agenda. The leak at the Aquatic Center was just addressed at the... Joint meeting? Joint meeting prior to this. There are still proposals being solicited on the security equipment for the parks, probably thinking that those, depending on the number of cameras that may be included, could be between seventy-five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars before it's all said and done. So we don't have a final number on that yet. This thing is costly, anticipated maybe being funded through our, like shredding or yeah, that we just take it out of the operating surplus that we talked about at finance today.
It's currently being taken out of operating, but a hundred and fifty dollars for me, turning that...
So it's minimal, it was kind of a placeholder put in there in case it was a more significant expense. Whether or not we kind of look some for any preparation for this site, I guess that's, again, kind of a placeholder. We have, have received proposals on the park master plans, is an item on the agenda for these tonight as well. And I know in the past we've taken some, made some comment that the organizational study, compensation study, maybe we're not something we wanted to, a couple of time there, just placeholders, and then possibly the village administrator succession, which we are gonna be discussing later tonight, I understand. So, I don't know, what other thoughts people may have about some of these things that they're...
Well, right now, they're just thoughts. They're, they're just thoughts, right? And number four is done, we did that one, too.
And number three, we're gonna be talking about, the parks. I think number two is coming up, yeah. Yeah, we have items on the agenda, new business for...
Two, three. So two, two and three is on, right?
Yep.
Okay. I just say we just keep kicking the can down, right?
Yep.
Just keep moving it forward.
Because I don't think we have to finish allocating until what, June next year? Or longer?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Wonderful. Okay. So, thirty-nine, anymore on thirty-nine?
Oh, no more thirty-nine. I don't, I don't have any more, unless you do.
Nope.
Good. Just for another item to play around?
Information?
Probably pertaining to the salt shed, you know, and also, yeah, it looks like, sketching about the AV equipment, item forty-two.
Okay. Okay, so we're done with that. Number forty, Stillwater Landing Mobile Home Park.
My apologies for not getting this in the packet last week, board members, but here's my update on the park. We met with park ownership back on May twenty-sixth, and several members were in that meeting, Mr. Maloney was in that meeting, Mr. Donner, Mrs. Higgins. The general feeling leaving the meeting was that part of the park management was moving in the right direction. They had a big list of stuff they wanted to do, and then, you know, so we targeted the three-month follow-up. In that time, since then, on May twenty-sixth, you find out that myself and Officer Soberg from EMPD, and another couple entities, went to a house in the, in the park, because there was actually reports of no functioning bathroom in the park, or in the home in the park. So, at the request of Officer Soberg, we did an inspection on the house and found that there was, in fact, no working bathroom in the home. The occupants were, were using a bucket on the floor. So that triggered a case with CPS, and then animal control from Everest Metro, and subsequent follow-up every couple weeks, myself and Officer Soberg have been in there, but the dates listed below, but it, it's about every two weeks that we're in there. I had to post the home as unfit for human habitation, since there are no working bathroom in there, so.
So, this, the posting was just the last couple weeks, right?
No, that was back on, back on May twenty-sixth, this particular house.
Okay.
So...
Just real quick, I just wanna make sure, I'm trying to catch up here, because as of the phone call I got last week and until right now, I've, I've had nothing but a good feeling, I've driven through there many times, trustee Cronin has two, he doesn't share the same things I do, I've not had a discussion, other than Keaton calling me. So on May twenty-sixth, we had the meeting, and on May twenty-sixth, following, I don't understand this.
Later that day. Later that day. Yes, Eric had put together a meeting later that day with Child Protective Services, the humane officer, myself.
Okay.
And him spearheading it.
All right, go ahead.
So, part of the reason for the posting, obviously, is to make sure that nobody is actually using the house as a living quarters. So that's part of the regular visits, and to see if any progress has been made. The initial posting allowed her to be in the home to make repairs on, on the facilities, and to clean up the house, since not only was it, there no working bathroom, but it is a, it's a really bad situation from a lack of cleanliness. So, so going forward, on subsequent visits, we've also found additional issues in the park. Quite a few homes have been unsecured that we found on, let's see, June first, found a plumbing issue on lot sixty-one, as they were dumping untreated wastewater from the house onto the ground underneath the home. Gave the occupant a verbal warning and had him, asked him to repair it ASAP, which he did. And then, June thirtieth, found lot forty-two to be unsecured, and the interior of that one was basically torn apart. And these are pretty, I mean, fortunately, Officer Soberg, they... And these are pretty, I mean, fortunately Officer Soberg is there. Cause we've definitely come across, I don't know how many, uh, medication bottles and, and that sort of stuff in the home. I think forty-two and Eric can speak to this if he wants to, if you have any questions for him, but looked like they were cooking meth in there. So there's definitely, you know, concern about getting the vacant home secured. July thirteenth was pretty, pretty routine until one of the park residents actually came up to us and said that there's people, um, squatting in one of the other vacant trailers. We investigated that and lot sixty-five was unsecured. And then we get into August. Um, and that's when, um, we kind of had to up our enforcement with our initial case that was unfit. She was actually living back in the house, had some pets back in the house and stuff. So we had to, uh, really kind of move the situation along a much more rapid pace. But then in August, we also found, uh, fifty-six and one hundred to be unsecured and also destroyed on the inside. And then following that August nineteenth visit is when I posted three houses in there that were previously unsecured and destroyed on the inside as unfit habitation. Big reason being that if other residents know that nobody's supposed to be in there, then they might tip off Everest Metro that we've got more people, you know, squatting inside those houses. So, um, but since May, Eric has started a, uh, neighborhood watch program in the park. And, uh, he's definitely got some, I think some people that are, that are bought into, to making the community a safer place. And then final visit was on the fourteenth. Had some contact with, uh, owners of lot forty-two. As they were, uh, inside the house that I had posted on September first. Um, had a brief conversation with them and, uh, they were just trying to move some of their personal effects out of there. So, um, just so everybody's on the same page, page three is, was the condition of the, kind of the major, major issues on lots in the park.
As of when?
That was May twenty-sixth. That was, page three was shared at our, at our meeting at ownership on, at May twenty-sixth.
And now do you have a current?
Other than, uh, cleaning up some of the yards, there's really no change in, in the conditions. So, other than, other than forty-two, fifty-six and one hundred were found to be unsecured. Whereas as of May twenty-sixth, they were not on the unsecured list.
So the second guy with Keaton, the day of our meeting on the twenty-sixth, is that the person that's there or no?
No.
Okay, so this person that's there a couple hours a week is also the same person that's over in Wasop too, right?
I know that Dan Weller, uh, manages a couple of different locations for them.
That's his name?
Dan Weller is the onsite manager.
And then with, with all this that you just told us, or me and whoever, probably more me, how, so all this has been, uh, to Keaton and to the other one?
Well, I guess, um, from a communication standpoint, most of, most of the visits have been specifically for follow-up visits on lot forty.
So, so has any of this been, uh, brought to their attention?
As far as the three houses that were posted, I did not specifically email him stating that we were going to post those houses. So...
But, but any of this, does, so if I, if we sent him this right now, which we should, he would, this would be the first time he's seen it too? All this?
He had that first list at the meeting.
Yep, I, we all did. But, but all this attention from June first, June thirtieth, July thirteenth, August third, August nineteenth, September first and September fourteenth, none of that's been communicated to the owner?
Every visit was an initiated for follow-up on the original case.
Okay. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to see the, just a minute. I'm just trying to get this on there, okay?
Yep.
So if I'm running a business, which I have in this village and up in Merrill, every single time I've had contact with the municipality, every single time I've been notified, every single time. Doesn't matter if it's the county with food, if it's licensing, to police matter, it doesn't matter. Every single time. If we went into Tommy's Car Wash and did an inspection on the water, I'm pretty sure we'd tell them. I, I just don't understand why we wouldn't communicate this. Now, now, i- if your answer is going to be, we don't have to, is that an answer? I, I don't know. What's your answer? What, what, you have your hand up. What do you want to say?
I was just going to say that my understanding of this is something I, this has something to do with case number forty, the reason that they're in there. It really had nothing to do with scheduled inspections on the follow-up.
Okay.
So, uh, my understanding is that all these notifications, the realization that the other things are there, an open door of whatever were discovered while they were in there, that doesn't excuse the fact...
I, I see forty as being, uh,
Case forty.
You know, the, oh yeah, case forty is on every one of these upfront. Everyone is always case forty, but then something else was found. I ju, I just, you know, I...
I, I don't know.
I, I don't get this. You know, was I right or wrong to write that letter? I don't know. I'm not making no apologies.
From a, from a communication standpoint, Mark. But I could definitely do a better job of communicating.
We all could. I can too. I never li, I never had your name in there. I had we, as, and including me, including me in that whole thing. When I apologized to, to Keaton, I didn't apologize for you. I apologize for me and all of us. Because not knowing what's going on. Eric, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I communicate with them on a monthly basis and almost weekly basis.
To, to who?
On these visits.
To this Dan Waller?
Yeah, if you went right now to the main office, there'd be a neighborhood watch listing that posts our agenda and our meetings. And these issues, the property issues are almost every month in the meetings.
Okay.
And that's a direct meeting with Dan and I.
Okay, so Dan, oh, can somebody help me? And this is open session and I'm on camera. Give me a little hint on Dan Waller. Is, is he appropriate? Is he, he's what?
He's their property manager.
Yep. Is he, is he of the same, uh, level as the two that were sitting here at the end of May twenty-sixth? And now, do you believe he passes it on air?
I believe that he's very motivated to help the park.
He is?
Yes.
Oh, that's good to hear.
He does, like I said, he does post the meeting minutes for every neighborhood watch meeting. This is the first week of every single month.
Okay.
He's notified when we're in the park on a weekly basis. I do think he's communicating it forward. I don't think he has the level of influence.
Nope. I, I get that. Yep, I get that. Yeah, okay.
All right. Just have a question.
Yeah.
What do you mean by very poor yard condition? What is it?
In brief, it could be any number of, uh, could be junk in the yard, could be tall grass. I didn't elaborate on, on those specific conditions. But typically it's going to be garbage in the yard or tall grass above code.
Thank you.
Now, I guess, Mark, you kind of answered that, but I guess I think he should actually still drop this. Is he aware of all these different, you know, vacant, dilapidated, very poor, I mean, he should be by looking at...
That letter, the page thing was given to Mr. Schultz.
Okay.
On May twenty-sixth.
Mr. Schultz is who?
Keaton. Keaton Schultz.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. We all got that. We all got that sheet. Yep. And then we actually identified some of the things. They actually moved it forward and said, this one's going to be done, this one's going to be done, whatever, whatever, whatever. Don't know if it actually ever got done. Hearing nothing from, all the way from then till today, I assume they got better. Until I heard from Steve. Steve has heard some other things from some, I think, individuals and maybe some drive-throughs.
I've just, I've just driven through there.
Yeah.
I mean, I drive past there multiple times a day on the backside.
I've probably gone in there since May twenty-sixth.
I don't think it's changed.
At least fifteen times, at least. And yep, the yard conditions, there's toys out there, high grass, I see that. I've probably looked past some other things. I mean, there's some houses in our community that are pretty rough too. Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's something. Schofield's going through something similar. I don't know how Aspen Street went with the village, but two eighty-one Grand Avenue, if you've followed that disaster that has gone on for probably four or five years now, we are still at the point now where it's closed and we have people squatting in there. We have drug use in there.
Where, where are we?
On Grand Avenue across from Fred Mueller.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that property is still privately owned. Um, it has no future. They're not going to get a park license. Everybody's been evicted. Um, there's still trailers in there that are privately owned. There's still trailers in there that are publicly owned. And it's, we get complaints on that daily of drug use in there. People are trespassing. We get little to no cooperation from, from the owners down there because they're out of state. I don't know what their end motivation is. My two cents listening, I'm not familiar with what is going on specifically at forty-three eleven, but from looking at what happened there and I think, um, the delays that were made. And I just talked about homelessness coming up and that's happening in two eighty-one grand. In my opinion, if we don't continue to enforce these, we're going to have the same problems here. And as we get colder, those people in these tents are going to be moving in these trailers. I, I believe personally we have to continue to, to enforce these and...
I totally agree.
Yep. People are complying. And a lot of the onus is on the residents. Some of them are privately owned. And I don't know how the cooperation with, with Keaton, because I've never met him, but, in my experience dealing with trailer parks, they'll tell you a lot. The management will tell you a lot of what you want to hear. And nothing gets followed through and years go by and things just get worse. And it becomes a police problem, which is different.
I, I actually went to a couple of his, uh, one was in Anago, which was stellar. Like he said, the one, I think in DePere was stellar. I think those are the two that I went to probably within the next month. But like you said, Eric, and, and I think Roman, you said it too, uh, if Dan is the one that can't make the decision, the decision maker is going to be Keaton or this other gentleman. And, you know, I, I would, I, I, I ask you to let me know and I will carry that torch for you. I will carry that torch. You know, he, he, he had a real head of steam on him, but nothing even close to Gary Gard. You know, Gary Gard can go for a full half an hour at full speed. You can't get a word in. This guy was nothing compared to Gary. So, uh, you know, I just think he wanted to be heard. Maybe he didn't feel like he got heard, you know? I, I'm going to be talking about this tomorrow. So, I am. And I, I have to be the one to talk to him tomorrow because what was told to me was not this, not even close. So, and, and regardless of how we all handle the public and how we all handle customer service, with all this in the back of your mind, when you were being talked to, yeah, I'd have a real problem with that. Yep, I would. Yep. So that's where I am. Uh, if you have any other ideas, or Eric, if you do, or Jennifer, let me know. But this is my baby to take care of because of what happened last week and the letter I wrote. So, and there'll be another letter coming home. So, okay. I didn't include all of you. But I did include, uh, um, one from planning and one from the trustees. And several department heads. I just, I was pretty amped up. And, uh, I, I purposely did not use a name, but obviously it must, it definitely got felt by you and I apologize. In total public and with no buts, no nothing, I apologize. I can't take it back.
That's okay.
I wrote it. No, don't say that. I apologize. So.
So I think in follow-up, we do realize there's some shortcomings here in terms of the communication. How scheduling gets done?
Well, that, that decision maker is paramount. I mean, you, if you're not getting to the decision maker, I, I wouldn't even waste my time with Dan. And I know Eric, you're talking to him every week. And that's probably what we have to do with, with your, um, with what you're doing. But with you, with ordinances and, and, and some of the, the different things we can hold and probably holding his license next year or sooner, that, that, that decision maker is everything. He's got all the purse strings. So he did say, um, American Asphalt, um, it put him off three times this year. I don't know how big of a job it was, but, uh, you know, he got plenty of stuff, stuff done for us. So...
Yeah, well, I think the problems are more than the condition of the street there, as, as is evident, I think, with the list.
Yeah. He had an issue, he had an issue with the lease, or excuse me, the lease sign. You know, that, that, you know, he's had lease signs seen up all, Raleigh Lockery has leased sign up still to this day. You know, for probably two or three years. And he thought his got taken down and it shouldn't have been. So...
In your email, you had mentioned you were going to look into whether or not we're required to notify him before we went there. Are, are we?
I don't, I, it hadn't mattered to me if we were required. We, we sat here and we said we were going to notify. I, I did. I, I told him that. And he, he has never reached out to me until now.
That was with respect to, see, and I, and I guess I learned this to me myself. My understanding is these visits have been coincidental to the follow-up on this condition of this case forty. And not been, not, they have not been a scheduled visit for us to look at the conditions that were discussed on twenty-sixth with the Village of Weston employees meeting. Which also included Officer Soberg. So there is my, so my confusion, which I didn't really understand until they had asked us some of the questions that you were asking tonight. So, um, I think there is a, and I, I did not look that up. I know there is a provision in statutes for allowing public officials to investigate things that may be, you know, uh, a problem with public health or safety or whatever on a property. Maybe the chief knows some of that, but I, you know, I, I don't have a citation. I know, but I know there's a reference and there's only quote about that.
We, we just had a good meeting, I thought, you know, and, uh, you know, absolutely, if there's child safety, I mean, when you had that in one of your emails, I go, what? What the hell, where did that come from? You know, I had no clue. And now every one of these is forty, 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 forty.
So if I'd been in there to, you know, for, uh, a scheduled meeting with them, then yeah, I would have, would have called them.
I, I would have just said, hey, May twenty-sixth, what the hell? You know, you said you were going to get this ball rolling. What, what, we don't see nothing. What, what's going on? What, you know? And I would, I would also send that report back to the board too. Or specifically Janet and myself and whoever else was in that meeting. Eric, you know, so that he knows what you're saying too. I would. I'd be pounding left and right. I, I just wouldn't wait. You know, anyway. Bunch of different things here.
Can, can we get an update on this next month or realistic?
You know, realistic, you know, to be honest, uh, I think you're going to have an update on this, uh, just a natural update like the attorney referral. Honestly, God, I think we should be on there for the next six months, every single month.
Okay.
It's got to be right in front of us because if this is going to head this way and we're going to pull that license, then that's so be it. That's just the way it is.
I agree.
Yep. That's so be it. I mean, I don't know how many, what, how many did he have? Well, over twenty, thirty parks?
So he's got, he's got a lot of properties.
Somehow it's, I, I thought it was eighty-four, but I think that's apartments and everything.
He owns, he also owns a park out in Stratford. Uh, he owns quite a few properties.
Yeah.
That, that being said, I also want, uh, i- if it's possible, I'd like us to update the tenants so they're at least, um, so, you know, they're not blindsided by the side.
Well, and that would be through Eric. I mean, if he's got a, a neighborhood watch going on, which is awesome. You know, you've got some people that care that want to do good.
You have thirty members of the neighborhood watch.
Good. But, um, I remember asking the question, when they took it over, it was in the sixties as far as who's paying. And now at that meeting, they said it was at ninety-four percent, ninety-four percent. So they actually went backwards on tenants. But at least ninety-four percent of the tenants are paying. Prior to that, it was in the sixties. So I thought that was good, that they had, you know, better tenants. All right, here we go. I still owe you lunch. That was for something else. All right, um, Stillwater. Yeah.
Any other questions?
It's Chinese.
Anybody else with any questions?
But if we could have an update every, every, whether, whether it's from you or just a spot where we can ask a question and it would be nice if you were here.
Yep, I can be of help.
Who makes that happen?
But thank you. Thank you, Eric. If you did anything, thank you. That was a little, little attempt at humor. Forty-one, discussion on possible action regarding continued use restrictions or closure of Weston Avenue as a truck route in the village. That's, that's mine. And if it's, if it goes nowhere, it goes nowhere. All I'm saying is we've got traffic coming out of the business park. It's, uh, heading up into Ryan, jumps over to Bydok, goes on to Weston, does an incredible turn with a bunch of semis at a lot of, two or three times a day is what the residents tell me. Goes down a tough Weston Avenue down to Camp Phillips, hangs a right or, or north, and then gets up on the highway. Those are all for the trucks that aren't local trucks. Local trucks can do whatever they want. But through trucks are deciding that, you know, several blocks out of my way to come out a controlled intersection on Schofield Avenue down by the school, which won't affect the school because the school's going in different directions, hanging a right or east to J, hanging a right or south to the highway and then deciding left or right. That's a through truck route. Instead of going down, up Ryan, over, you know, which the road ain't set for, and then hanging that very abrupt right on Weston Avenue. Now, you know, talking to some of the people out there that the owners, they don't want to be the ones to tell those trucks what to do. You know, up in Merrill, I don't want to tell over the road people what to do. But in Merrill, they've got to go almost three miles out of their way, all the way up to the pool and then come back and double back because all the routes have now been taken away for our group. So, I don't think that's a lot to ask. And, and I mean, if we're not going to start building... So, I don't think that's a lot to ask and, and I mean, if we're not gonna start building for two years, especially the west, the west side. Why wouldn't we entertain that? Are we gonna capture all the trucks? No, but we're gonna catch most. Because I'll tell you, that is a hefty fine if you're driving on a no truck route. Just a thought, and nothing has to happen here.
You said that, the, you said Ryan isn't even rated for semi trucks?
I don't, I don't know that, Michael?
Ryan can handle a truck track.
Can handle it, but is it designed for trucks? That amount of trucks, really, probably not.
I don't think they can take those terribly.
I mean, the turning radius is probably the biggest thing, the pavement section itself is, you know, like when we repaved Ryan Street, I think in twenty nineteen.
But, but is this even a discussion? The discussion is traffic control and safety. You know, so they're doing, you know, they're going out, going south on Ryan, then uh, west on uh, Weston. And then north on Camp Phillips, I mean, that, that's a long way. And uh, Ryan, how far do you have to get to Holland? And then it gets completely ratted up, you know, through there. When they can go to controlled intersection, hang a right, jump on the highway, east or west, here we go. Seventy to eighty feet running down.
Well, no, my, my question about the rating for it was. We uh, was fixing roads is not exactly cheap, so if it's, so if it's not rated for semi tr- for semi trucks, that's another reason to potentially close it.
Right.
So even if it can handle it, that many number of trucks for, or that many uh, semis ever, uh, every day going through it. How quickly does, does that wear out the life of the road?
And, and then, and then uh, what I'm hearing from some of the owners in the business park is none of them wanna go uh, down Ryan. And then left or west to Schofield uh, corner with Camp Phillips, because that's a wild interchange for semis. And, and it is, but yet they'll do the other thing to get out of, yet they won't go to J because oh my heavens, it's, you know, four blocks out of the way.
I, I have a question, but when they get to Weston, they gotta take a right. Why do they do that?
Why?
It's not wide enough, that curve is not.
You, you gotta get out there with Shang and watch this, you, you gotta see them how they, they do a full circle. It's almost like they're using a roundabout, they use that much of the road. They're semi stacked up there.
Where are they coming from?
Uh, from the business park or going to the business park.
They make wide turns. They make wide turns.
I've got, I've got several residents that live uh, right there, right on that corner. Uh, that, you know, that just can't believe it, how much truck traffic is out there.
So if you put it no through truck traffic, we would have to differentiate between which trucks are coming off of Weston.
That's a tough one.
It's gonna be very difficult to.
The sweet deal would be to uh, to put a uh, um, you know, you can't get out to Ryan right there. Have them go back in, that's not an exit. I know that sounds crazy, or entrance only, whatever. But I mean, did we design that business park to have that be an entrance off of Ryan? I don't know, Jen. I, I would say that we had, we designed it to be off the four lane of Schofield Avenue.
If you recall, that part of the business park was acquired from the Christians. Because they were developing that initially as a commercial area, but it didn't, they didn't have success, so we ended up acquiring it from them. So I don't, you know, that really wasn't a factor in, I think, I don't think so much with our business park development to the east off of Zinzer.
Um, this would not, this would not be a rare, we had it, we don't need a decision tonight, I, I'm just trying to see.
I do.
Get to the thing, well, drive out there and look at it.
The way that business park was designed was all the traffic goes to Schofield Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Then they can go to J or they can go to Camp Phillips, depend where you want.
Yeah.
It was never in play to use the Ryan.
Right.
And Weston Avenue for that, for that, that business park.
Yep, Steve?
My only concern with that is a couple of times now in the last, well, two weeks here since school started, I've driven out that way between seven and eight. There's cars backed up waiting to turn left off of Schofield Avenue, there's cars backed up waiting to turn right coming from Highway J. And that parking lot where the schools are is so plugged full, can't even move.
But the semis are exiting and, and going east on a, on, nobody's on that road, so.
My, well, my suggestion would be if we're gonna do this, we would need to tell, we would need to dictate that they have, that they have to go to the east and go to J. They can't make a left turn out of the industrial.
They don't wanna go to Schofield and Camp Phillips, they don't wanna go down there, that's a horrible corner for them.
Uh, Administrator Dom?
Oh, sorry. So in the original project plan for tid one, there was a concept of having a connection following what is now Chris, what is Christie Lane. Out to um, J. And that was essentially abandoned.
Help me out with Christine.
So if you go on the south side of say where, I think it's still called South Side Tire.
Oh.
And the auto auction.
Yep.
And behind County Materials.
Yep.
That's Christie Lane, but you also have a residential neighborhood to this.
The brown addition, yep.
So the reason that was not uh, selected or that project was abandoned at the time. Was because of the concerns of that neighborhood for having truck traffic go by.
But it's, is it through there or like how?
As a street, you know, as a street to access the business park.
Oh, oh, yeah, but I'll say Christie Lane though is between this uh, the, you know, those high end and then um, uh.
Between Fabco.
Fabco, yeah, okay, got it, okay, yeah, oh God, no, we can't.
It's an island of a residential development.
Yeah, there's, there's no way, no way, nope. I was on the board when we were planning, now they're fifty feet tall, you know, so we don't wanna touch that neighborhood.
White street ahead there?
Nope, nope, no way. Yeah, anyway, well, I'm just talking about a couple of signs, put some red flags on there. You're gonna have some truckers pissed, or obsessed, excuse me.
Mr. Maloney, are they coming out Commerce, is that where they're going out to Schofield Avenue then?
They're coming out by a wood facility, that's where they're coming out. And they're hanging on there.
By R G B hardwoods.
They're going out onto Ryan Street right by.
Looking right at Commerce Place. And then they're hanging a left on Commerce. Yep.
Put a no left turn for trucks on that.
Bingo, bingo, love it.
Is that enforceable then?
Yeah, absolutely it is.
I mean, I gotta look, but that's the first thing that came to my mind, and I think you can dictate that. But are they gonna go out to Schofield Avenue then come down and then take a left on Ryan? That's an issue.
That's not a truck route, I just, you know, that's not a truck route.
You already closed that one?
No, no, I'm just saying, no truck route. Well, they got them all over in Merrill.
I'll look, I'll look.
Commerce Street is a truck, a truck route to that sign?
No. Commerce.
That's, if you went over the bridge and then you took, oh yeah, right there, right there.
Come on, I'm lost.
That would take you to that light by the water tower, is that the way we're talking about in the school, to divert traffic?
Yeah, there.
Right, so we put a truck route to Commerce Street, so if you had a no left.
It is now, you know.
Oh, well, if you had a no left turn on Ryan, you'd have to have a sign at Commerce saying.
Lanes, yep.
Yeah, truckers take.
They're already coming off the highway, right around that, you know, right around county concrete and that's how they get in.
Oh.
But sometimes they're sitting there, you know, or it's uh, it's a lot of the, of the trucks leaving in the morning to go deliver.
Well, yeah, that's.
Lots of supply and a lot of others too, yeah, Michael?
I mean, there's a lot that do come off at X instead of taking a left to go to Schofield Avenue, they go south and then they come Weston Avenue, you know. They come off the highway south, they take Weston Avenue and then go north on Ryan too.
Yep, but yeah, that's not designed for it though.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, so the no left turn maybe.
But you got control lights, you know, you got a four-way stop at Clucks. And then a left turn, yep, it's busy, but it's all in a right lane, everything's over there. And that's just remarkable to see those, all those cars stacked up. I just, I just can't believe it sometimes.
What time of the day? What time of the day are you seeing them?
Seven to eight.
Eight.
Yeah, seven to eight.
When school starts.
Unbelievable, the trucks back, or the cars backed up there.
Yeah.
They're almost to Clucks. Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Somebody oughta, somebody oughta have like an coffee stand or ice cream stand there or something.
One of these days, someone's gonna get blinded by the light, by the sun, and there's gonna be a bad wreck.
Yeah, yeah. God, what was that, T C D C or blinded by the light?
E L O.
Oh yeah, I didn't know where I was going. All right, uh, so just, just a thought, just to bring it up. Forty-one, discussion of possible action regarding continued use restrictions or closure of, oh hello, that was it? Yep, forty, forty-two, who does this? A V equipment and installation proposal for new boardroom and or training room. Nate, you're on there like four times tonight, four times, that's a lot. Is this a personal best? I don't, it, it's gotta be, you must have a chart going on. So um, let's see.
On forty-one, you did one yet.
Forty-two.
I know.
Yeah, there, there was discussion, possible action on that, but I, I really don't think we're at that point yet. I think Chief, you said you were gonna go take a look at it, maybe?
I, sure, I understand.
Uh, you said you were gonna go look at Ryan and maybe a no left turn?
Yeah, yeah, I'll look into that.
Would you please? Okay, thank you.
That might.
Yep.
Okay.
So now forty-two, back on uh, new business. A V equipment installation proposal for new boardroom and or training. Bunch of pressure?
Move to uh, move to approve uh, the A V project proposal from camera corner connecting point in the amount of seventy-six thousand, three hundred, eleven dollars and eighteen cents.
That's some serious heartburn.
Yeah, that is.
So, so now we're, now we're bringing in speakers and all that stuff, yeah? Right? It's audio.
I can go over the, the proposal that's included.
In the seventy thousand, is it, is it the monitors too?
I'm just gonna interrupt, but do you wanna do a second and then open?
Yeah, good, good point. We have a Fini and a, do we have a second?
Fuck.
Second by Zagami. And now for the discussion.
Do we have to do the training room right now? Number one.
They don't have to.
But we're gonna get them later.
Get all kinds of things later.
Yeah.
Not the way the budget's going.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna say this, only because it's said, it's been said to me so many times. How many times do you build a new house and buy all brand new furniture? I know we're moving some, so I don't wanna get a high roll over there.
This is, well, we're not talking.
I, I know, example, example, example. So, you know, sometimes, does it all have to be new right now? I mean, prior to the meeting, we were talking about the range and, and all the different things, it, it's usable now, why couldn't we get it in six months? Why does it have to all be now?
How much is the cost of installation and how much cost of equipment?
Uh, the labor was around twelve thousand. Um, so the remaining remainder was equipment.
That was for boardroom and training room?
Yes.
And we had bids on this?
Yes.
How many?
Only two, but.
Who was the other one?
Smart Spaces for almost a hundred seventeen.
I will tell you, I have a sister-in-law that's worked forty years for W B A Y over at Green Bay. Uh, absolutely, that is the go-to place over there. It is not the camera corner that you think of, you know, in Yowasaw. Right. Uh, those are incredible wealth of people, I mean, I, I, it actually pains me to say that right now, that we may actually spend money here, but. Uh, she, she just says they're, they're, they're top-notch, so.
We, we've used them for the, the aquatic center now to rehab the surveillance system there. I'm very happy.
So where are we everybody?
So, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Get something here, so we, we did sign the proposal, we have the, the new furnishings proposal was in the contract we have is for a hundred and eighteen thousand. We had sixty-five thousand dollars budgeted.
Right.
So the assumption is we are drawing out of our two hundred thousand dollar contingency for the balance of that amount, which, which would be fifty-three thousand dollars. If I did my math correctly. Um, that would leave a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of the two hundred thousand dollar contingency for those type, this type of thing.
So you're saying we could take seventy out of that for this?
We could, that'd be an option, or ARPA funds would be another option, depending on our philosophy.
I think the, the ARPA for me, it, it just has to touch everybody. It can't, it can't be a single event or a certain se- segment, so this would touch everybody, yeah. Anybody care to stab at it?
What else can we use this equipment for? Other than board meetings, I mean, is it stuff that you guys can use with other municipalities when you have? Meetings or webinars or stuff set up like that, training events, I mean, is this equipment mostly just to record? And if it's going in both the boardroom and the training room, yes, I know there's an interest in holding of the things that we, we've been contacted by the schoolers. We really wanna come and have a, they'd like to get a, you know, sense of what we have done and all that, I mean, that, that's not necessarily. What plays in necessarily to this uh, discussion, but I mean, we, people know we're gonna have this facility and we have, we have the ability to host things like that. So, so Jennifer, has Nate has something he wanted to add in there?
Go ahead, Nate.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna add that, I think we've had these discussions before a little bit, you know, Mark, you made the comment, like, the equipment here, you can't hear each other real well. Um, I think I took that as kind of marching orders to find something that, you know, would, would fix some of the issues that are in this room. Um, to update that new room. Um, the, the new room, we have microphones that would sit in the ceiling tiles, they look like a ceiling tile. And there'd be speakers throughout the ceilings. Um, and so you, you would, the microphones here would pick up the speakers over here on the side of the room. The idea was to try and fix some of the issues we have here.
But it's, it's not ideal here and the room is about the same, about the same size, I think it's a couple of feet longer, not as wide though. And like, like, for instance, Brian Brunel, Brian Brunel.
Brunel.
Will, will not come here anymore, can't hear, he just can't hear, he, he tries to sit by those two speakers and that's got Rowan put up, can't hear. And then, you know, we don't talk into here, we've got some soft speakers, me, I'm the obvious one. But uh, it's, it's not conducive to hold a decent meeting. So I, it's amazing that the audio catches it pretty well on the camera.
Yeah.
But um, but we, we, it's gotta be an upgrade, there's other municipalities, I go to Red Mountain and oh my heavens, it's.
They're, they spent seventy-five on it.
Yeah.
So it, it's in line with, but you know.
It's, you know, we've gotta be transparent, we've gotta, people have to hear us. So it's one of the first things we did, I think when uh, I can't remember if it was you or um, or ye, when one of you two got on, it was the first thing we did was start recording. We had the county do it and then very smartly, we ended up using some ARPA money to buy our own equipment and now we, we're, we're way ahead of money now. Because we have our own equipment. And now we're doing also planning, we're also doing several other meetings, right? Not just B O T.
All of them, yeah.
Oh, we're doing them all, yep.
And the idea would be to take this equipment and use in the conference rooms. Uh, at the new, like, so that those conference rooms would also have the capability.
If, if, if you haven't watched our meetings, don't, it's really, really hard to do. Yeah, so especially if you're speaking, you know, I have, I can't, I've watched it once, I can't do it anymore, I can't, so, yeah. It's, all of you look great, but man, I, I mean, I, I think I'm gonna sit back by Nate pretty soon. Anyway, so what's your pleasure?
I agree.
We have a motion and second.
We do, anyone more on the discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie? Uh, any more Nate, can I just jump to yours right away? Uh, forty-three, comprehensive outdoor recreation plan update, corp and master plans for Kennedy and Praska Parks. So ju- just real quick on parks, so Sean, are you on? So Praska Park, if you're talking about doing something later, we're not, no, we don't have a mandate to do Praska Park, correct? I mean, I know we're doing a study.
No, we're just.
Yeah, we're just looking at it.
Hold on here, I mean, the work, that would be uh.
The master plan.
Process. Identify what's done there, so yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay.
It was my, it was my understanding we were gonna focus on one park and not multiple parks, is that correct?
Um, no, well, for the corp, it covers all, the whole entire park system. So it's update to the entire park system, so future improvements, et cetera, anything that you would wanna, that people visualize or would think that we need in the parks, get included in the corp. But including in the corp, then it allows you to be able to apply for grant funds through the state and federal government. If that project is not in your corp, then you can't apply for it. You would have to amend your corp and get the project in there before you could apply for funding for it. So the corp update is something that steers the direction for the next five years for the entire system.
Just explain for me and maybe others, corp is who?
It's a comprehensive outdoor rec plan.
Yeah, I got that part, but who is it? It's state, federal, uh, who?
Who is it? It's our plan.
Yeah, oh, it's our plan, yep.
It's our plan, yeah, here, here we go.
You know, don't tell me all of you guys knew that, so I really wanna hear.
But it's a component of our comprehensive, it's a really comprehensive plan.
I know, but it's uh, I mean, it took me four pages with Michael to know what T S S stood for. Third page, he finally actually said what T S S stand for and I was damned if I was gonna call you and ask you. I figured somewhere you're gonna say it.
It's like being in the military, lots of acronyms.
Oh my gosh.
I need the acronyms.
I just do, my world, holy man, all right, so back on corp, so now that's ours.
It is ours.
So you're saying that if it's not in the corp, we can't do it, so we're saying to ourselves that if we.
I'm saying, I didn't say that. Well, I said, we can't apply for grant funds for.
If it's not all.
If it's not in that corp.
Oh, I did not know that, okay.
We can do any project we want, we don't need the corp, but.
So somebody somewhere says, if you want grant money, which is basically over taxation, and they held it, but, uh, uh, that's another story. And then, and then, but you have to have a corp plan for us to grant you any excess money.
Right.
Well, I did not know that.
But I think, uh, uh, trustee Wyland, I think I know exactly where you're coming from, because, oh, some of the discussion had been that Prohaska might be like a. Like an unguided or low-directed park, uh, rather than like having a specific focus like the.
Kennedy.
Like, yeah, like Kennedy.
Yes, it, it's supposed to be borrowed past use, less.
Think about.
Developed park, so more walking trails, pointing trails, not a huge investment to, to develop, develop it. Uh, we are required, if we do develop it, it is required to be a park though, based on the purchase agreement that we made.
Right. But I mean, the, the.
But we don't have a timeline for it.
The most attention we're gonna get, though, is any kind of redevelopment of Kennedy. If there's another way of using Kennedy and more than we are now, oh my heavens, would that be a big bonus? I mean, it'd be huge, just the way it's being used now. Now, now that that was talked about a couple months ago, I'm thinking, okay, if we have a diamond over here in this corner shooting this way, holy man, is that gonna be different, you know? You know, and then the building is gone, you know, so to give more room. I know we have to have a well there or something, but. Okay.
How does this tie into Kennedy then? Because wasn't there a second and other proposal you were, you were?
Yeah, that's also included in here.
So this is part of this thirty?
There's a, there's a, yes, so, um, there's the comprehensive outdoor rec plan update, and then there is master plans for Kennedy and Prohaska on there.
Okay, so.
So there's one, there's one, uh, they approved or recommended approval to Rettler Corporation, thirty-one thousand, five hundred, which includes the corp update and master plans for both parks. And you were all emailed the actual proposals. Um, there's five proposals, that's what, a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and forty pages of proposals that we weren't gonna include in packets, so you were emailing them. You wanted to look into them a little more in depth.
It's been, what, forty-five minutes on this?
I mean, I have a. Recommendations that came back from, from the city and.
Parks, yep.
Okay.
And this is another one where we also are planning on deferring them actually doing it, just because of the strategic planning process, because there might be something that comes out of there. That would steer the direction of this also.
That's kind of what I was curious about is.
So, um, we were talking about starting it this fall, but more like this would be after the first of the year, you know, when the strategic planning process, we have that, and, because if something comes out of that, that would steer this update also.
Right.
I mean, I, I feel like Kennedy definitely needs some improvements. That would probably, I mean, that's one of the biggest, that is the biggest, most used park in, in Weston, so.
And, and this is info-only?
No, there is, there's actually a motion.
Uh, in forty-three?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Forty-four.
Thank you, forty-four.
Gotcha. Uh, no, that's, forty-four is public exterior. So we're still in forty-three. Okay.
I move to approve the proposal.
I'm making sure we, we have the ability.
Oh.
Forty-three, do we?
Why, why do you say no?
Uh, I don't see, do I see it?
Uh, it's on page one sixty-two.
One sixty-two, ah. Uh, correct them under, all right. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Rettler Corporation to complete the corp update and the master plans.
Second.
Motion by Cronin, second by Feeny, and hearing no more on the discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Uh, forty-four, discussion and possible action on bid results for public safety building exterior. I am beyond disappointed in this. Um, I think we need to completely scrap it and throw away the bids. And start over in spring, uh, and not use, uh, uh, the current person, uh, or group helping us.
I'd like to motion move to reject bids for the public safety building exterior improvements, and, uh, request to come back to it in February.
Second.
Motion by Hardingger, second by Feeny, uh, any more on the discussion?
I have a question.
You have a discussion?
There is, uh, yeah, I guess we come back to him February, that's fine, obviously, this is not in time, based on current economics, but we, just to make sure that we're all aware that. That brick or block on the, around the base is gonna need some attention before, sort of, you know, sort of later, it doesn't have to happen this fall, but sealing that block and doing any kind of. Joint repair in there on the, on the block is something that was to be part of this, so we don't, we can't let that deteriorate.
But that was there four or five years ago.
Right.
That was identified that long ago and not just on this project. And it should have been actually, this all should have been done years ago. So, but yes, you're right, we, we gotta get at it.
Roman, is that gonna be a problem with that building in the meantime?
No, I mean, it's still gonna stand up.
Yeah.
You know, we got a, a giant wall of, you know, hornets living in there too.
Chief Finkie, Chief Schultz?
Hmm?
Is that gonna be okay?
Well, it's not okay. Extremely disappointing, extremely disappointing.
No, I'm, I'm agreeing with you there, I'm just making sure that it's not gonna affect our operations or health of the building or anything else.
It, it, it sat still, and I, I believe with John, for months. Whether there was other things that had to happen, I have no clue, but it sat still for a quarter, I mean, at least four to five months before we got on this. We approved the money and it sat and sat and it sat and it sat, and we finally got on it, and my only, I left the meeting on intentionally, because all I wanted to hear was that we get done this year, because it, I, it just needs attention. The interior can be done later. I was at that meeting, I remember. And I, uh, you know.
One of us asked that it could be, if it could be done this year.
We're, we're gonna go, we're gonna go right into another one here, so if that's enough on the discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Number forty-five, discussion and possible action on a bid results for the salt shed. Here's another one, that we've been let down, I mean, my God, if this isn't a, a course crew, I, it's like unbelievable. So now we're over a million dollars is what I'm reading. Michael, if you could help me out here a little bit too, key two-two. So if we move this shed over to our new building, if we just did, somehow, some way, it got moved over there, Ijima genie, whatever, would it work?
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, that's enough? Yes.
Yes.
So if the yes, if yes to this building, and this building is not a one-point-two to one-point-four building, but yet now, all of a sudden, it is. Yet a year ago, we could do this for, you know, under four-hundred thousand, and we've been using the same individual, same group of people to do this, and here we go again. Now we've done what, two or three bids, we're over a million dollars on a salt shed. Holy mackerel.
Yeah.
We could be, we could be, let's work with somebody else's sh- salt shed, see that a bunch of times, and get some, a transfer driver to, to meet us with salt for a couple of years. My God, I, to house salt for over a million dollars is. That's unbelievable. So I, I think we need somebody else to help us with this. That's what I think. That's my one opinion. Michael?
Yeah, I guess I did talk to the supplier of, I mean, the salt shed is kind of a, a prefab building unit, um.
Not this one.
Yeah, you, you essentially order it in a catalog, and they ship you, you know, it's like a, it's fine, it's, it's a really big yard shed, right? Like, go to Menard's.
This one ain't a million, you just said, order this one.
The one that we have?
Yeah, order it.
It's, today it might be. So, I mean, the dimensions of what we are looking to build over there is rela, is the same capacity of what our current shed is. Um, you know, so just looking at the raw material costs, we're, we're over a half a million dollars just in the lumber to get you the shed.
And, and now, and now he is recommending that we stop, stall, right? Because, because I would do the exact same thing to have any kind of saving grace. I would do the same thing, I'd say, oh, you know what, we should back up here. Well, hell, yeah, we failed so many times, I think we got the wrong person, I think we need to have somebody else here more local, and, uh, and do it. So that's, that's my two cents, so, uh, any pleasure here on forty-five?
Mark?
Yeah, go ahead, Ushin.
There's, I think only less than a handful of people around the state, they do this type of work. I think we should, if we're gonna change here, we gotta ask those specific people to do us the most.
Do you have to, um, do you have to be like certified to do a salt shed? Is it something to do with the salt? Because I, I'll, have, have we reached out to John Menard? Because I'll bet you John Menard could build this building.
You, you don't have to be certified, but you have experience. And that's what we should look for. We don't want educated person, we want somebody who knows the stuff, has done it, to do the project. In my opinion, I think we should search those people to come and, up with salt.
Do we have an estimate of what it's gonna cost to move the old man?
Oh, yeah.
So we, that was one of the options, was they could bid on moving our existing shed, and nobody gave us a number. The one contractor that was, um, contemplating it, my understanding, they, they didn't wanna take on the liability risk of trying to move the existing structure, in the event that it collapsed, so. So.
Yeah, it's not easy a structure to move.
All shooting movers.
What, what's the, do we have an option?
Shooting movers.
Bingo. Talk to, who? Who? Shooting movers? I mean, talk to some unconventional people. I mean.
The raw bar.
Stuff, stuff can happen, I'm telling you.
Do we, uh, what's the option, continue to use this until we sell this plot of land?
Bingo, we can.
Yeah, that's what I think the original.
Yeah, we're gonna use it this winter for sure.
Okay, so, we don't need to move on this, this item right now, then?
Okay, so forty-five, we, we do have to move on the bid results, just like we did the last one, so.
Move to, to.
Reject the bid.
Reject.
Uh, by Erling, second by, uh, Cronin, uh, hearing no more on the discussion.
Question.
Question.
For, did he explain why the bed is high because of concrete, or what, what's the reason for?
Materials right now is what I understand.
Materials.
It's still pretty high.
Water.
Because of the wood pricing and odds.
Director, what else?
Michael, explain this to him.
And like I said, just the raw materials to get the lumber, um, about four-hundred thousand dollars, um, my understanding is the concrete foundation work was one another, under ten, um. You know, if you look at a construction cost index over the last, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Year and a half, two years, it's, it's a, it's a very tall spike, you know? So I think it is just labor costs, you know, lumber, you know, material costs.
So.
But I don't know, I mean.
Does anybody have any recollection, as long as we're gonna go down this rabbit hole, does anybody have any recollection of what the bids were, and that we rejected on, with John's advisory to reject?
Yeah, it's on here.
Yeah, what's, what were the three bids? Like nine sixty-one? What?
No.
Oh, no, one, no, 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 no.
It was five hundred. Five ninety-five.
Five ninety-five.
I wanna say it was five something, because he had four hundred.
Five ninety-five, we could have held Myron to that one.
Yep.
Five ninety-five.
Yeah, Myron didn't put the bid in there. It was an alternate.
No, it was an alternate, yes, it was.
It was part of the original bid for the building.
John advised us not to take it, we could do it cheaper on our own. There you go.
It was right before the whole spike.
I sell fruit, I can help you with fruit and vegetables, I can't help you with wood. And that's all he does, is what he does. So back on forty-five, hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Forty-six, discussion and possible action on continuing design for the public safety interior building and improvements. Um, I, I will go for that, uh, as long as we're not using, uh, the same group that we have in the past.
So then you're, not, you're, you're, you're saying then that you want to, uh, cancel the contract with CUNY?
All, all, at, what, what kind of assurances do we have? Being that we're now gonna be at five fifty for the exterior, where are we gonna be for the interior now?
I don't think anybody can tell you. I don't care who we.
How, how much, how much more money will we, will we s- spend with him to get to that point where we do know?
And now we, so we start with a whole new architect?
Don't know.
To re-educate?
I, I don't have a good feeling. I, I know everyone here likes him, and he's, he's a very likable person, that's, that's kind of the job description to be, so that, then we can get through these hookups and we stub our toe, but, uh, I don't have a good feeling.
Regardless of what our personal feelings may be, I can't.
Whoa, 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 it goes both ways. And you bet, you bet that's my personal, but it's also the opinion of the staff that everyone likes him, it goes both ways, regardless of what our opinion is. So I just be careful with when you say that.
I'm just saying.
All right.
Whether we dislike him, whether we think we like him. There is effort that has been put into understanding what's going on over at that building, that has been brought into this whole design effort, somebody new is gonna come in. We can get proposals from.
You know what, I'm gonna go back and, and take another stab. So we, we put in one-point-eight million dollars in there, all of what we're talking about right now was completely not talked about, completely forgotten, not brought up. We don't, you know, nobody's telling us we need the exterior done, nobody's telling us the inside's gotta be done. Now all of a sudden, we've got another million too, on top of the one-point-eight. So I, I don't know if that was a real miracle cure there, when we had to tell them that we wanted to do this or that it needed to get done. When it all got said and done at one-point-eight, I was scratching my head, when is this gonna get painted? Are you kidding me? The paint's not included in one-point-eight? I was shocked. And I think our original bid, and talking to ye, ye thought it was eight-hundred thousand, but it wasn't apples to apples, we had changed the whole thing to this, but we get done with one-point-eight million? And it's taken us ten years to get that far? And we don't paint the building? Oh, come on.
Uh, Chief Schultz, Chief Finkie, uh, do you guys have an opinion on CUNY architect? Are you, uh, do you, uh, like the path that's, uh, or?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
And I, and I will, I will, if you guys wanna continue on that path, I'm, I'm not sliding you, Keith, but if you two wanna continue on that path, I'll yield.
I think some of my experiences in this, and I'm not familiar, this is my first go-around, I think a lot of the subcontractors is where a lot of the issues came in. But I can appreciate what Keith's saying, you know, they have an idea, you've spent a lot of money. My only suggestion would be maybe look at a smaller. Scope of a project, more with like an HVAC system that we're having, you know, real needs and concerns for, um, maybe scrap some of the cosmetic stuff for now, but.
That's a wallpaper, has to get changed.
Yeah, and those are cosmetic things, but, um, that west wall of the building is not very well heated, um, you have an intox machine up in that north or southwest corner that needs to have a temper. Temperature-regulated room, or that machine won't function, um, it's actually been brought up in a court case recently, so, and putting in electric heaters in there is not a good viable option. That would be my only thing that I think would be an absolute need, some of the other, yeah, well, it looks, it looks dated, very, very dated, but it's functional.
I guess my input would be very similar to what Clay had said, I mean, from what they did in the past, and I might get some awkward looks for doing this, but I think sometimes, I mean, some of the work by some of the subcontractors, I think, was questionable for what they did. I mean, some of the flooring is already having issues, and I always pointed out to Roman and, and Scott a couple times, um, one of our garage doors is held on by like two bolts, and those two bolts are barely into the wall. I think if we get a good windstorm, that maybe it's coming down. Um, you know, I think some, maybe some of the cosmetic stuff could probably get pushed back, um, but at the same time, I don't wanna see it just get forgotten about then either. Um, but I will agree with, I forget who said it over there, I mean, John seems to be a very likable guy, and I think he probably knows his job well, um, but sometimes I feel like we could probably just work with some local guys that can get some of this stuff done cheaper than somebody from Kenosha or wherever he's from. Um, but again, I am not an expert in building construction by any stretch of the imagination, so.
That makes a suggestion, Mr. President?
I do not, nope, in, in my state of mind right now.
Okay, so.
You're, you're the builder, you're the expert on, on our trustees.
Fine, and just to caveat on the.
Actually, you and.
You know, the request as far as things go, I did a forty-by-forty foundation last year that cost about twenty grand, and doing a twenty-by-twenty-eight this year, it's costing twenty-four. I mean, that's a significant jump from a much smaller pad, anyway. Um, I, I, I would wrap the interior with the exterior, we'll tell them we're gonna re, re-approach that, I don't know how much money we've. Put into these guys already, um, but we, it's not gonna get done this year, and I think we have much more pressing issues right now, but, that being said, if there's things like you're saying, this, one of these rooms needs to be heating-regulated, I know there's issues with the HVAC that's causing. I know there's issues with the HVAC that's causing respiratory issues with some of your officers and the staff there that needs to be addressed immediately. I, I'd like to request with Roman as well, what immediate things we can, we can take care of and a low budget thing and put out hopefully to local contractors or smaller contractor firms that are gonna actually be able to do the work in a timely manner and not wildly expensive. And then we re-approach the larger projects sometime in the spring.
So is that your motion?
What? Sir, did you get all that?
Cam's writing really good.
Yeah, over there. I see the, the slur coming off the pencil.
I think so. Just listening to Chief, that HVAC has to be sized proper with the building so we can.
Well, there's two HVAC issues from what I understand. Number one, you've got old moisture, some kind of concerns with the vet, the ducts that are actually in the foundation from the old, okay, that needs to be sealed off. And I know you've got some zoning, zone issues with the currents. I mean, I know there's, there's a lot more than just throwing a heater in the room or whatever it needs to be. But I, I have a lot of confidence in Roman and, and us to kind of figure out how to make that work and, and not some huge project thing in the meantime until we can actually get the right things laid out that need to happen rather than this big thing that this thing's kind of turned into. So at least get some of the issues addressed.
I think there's only a couple of zones in the whole.
Yeah.
And what the problem is, is we've got air conditioning running, we've got a window.
I, I know, I know. I think it's the VFR system was, was whacked up or something like that, Roman. I don't remember. I remember the conversation.
Yeah, and so the biggest concern was, I mean, the, the system running underneath the.
Yeah, that needs to be capped.
It needs to be removed and a new furnace put in to.
Or just filled. It's in the concrete. I would just probably fill it.
My only question, answer I'd like is if we're not gonna do that this year, I will, I got a quote from, I think it was K-Tech for two grand to clean.
At least clean it?
Yes. So I didn't want to have it cleaned because we were talking about for this last.
It's definitely not, it's definitely not gonna happen. So I'd like to motion to approve you through.
That you can do. You can do that.
Well, depending on, we, we don't have an action item for.
You're absolutely correct. I have the budget.
He can handle that on his.
Sure. Okay, Chief. There you go.
So, but to go back to Keith here on forty-six, what are we gonna do to continue? So, and Barb has a question, by the way.
Well, yeah, because Josh had mentioned something about a door, only two hinges and the floor going. Can't we bring them back on that?
Well, I think where it's over a year now, there was.
I don't know why we couldn't because they're working on our municipal building right now. It's the same group.
The door guys, the guys that put the doors in.
Yep.
That had to be one of the, I mean, I could have done better than that.
Same group, same group doing our municipal building, right?
But I guess I still would bring him in and say, how can you say this is?
They haven't even really left.
Oh, okay. Have them look at it. I guess I, I'm not gonna.
There's three assets.
I mean, I've got a contractor coming back all the time because I don't like what's there.
It might be worth the money to, to call American Overhead Door. He was probably double or triple the price on the bid, but I know they do good work.
That's usually who we call.
Yep. That, that, they do extremely good work. They're expensive. But the group in Red Mountain used to be thirty years ago the best in the area and they are not. And that's why they get all the bids, because they're a little bit.
But there are still some issues over at that site that, I mean, we still have a dumpster closure because the subcontractor ripped it out and threw it in the dumpster.
Where is this? At our building?
Safety building?
Yeah. Oh. Okay.
And we're putting in.
I, we need to move forward to one forty-six.
Hang on.
I, I, I think I share your sentiment. I'm, I'm kind of, I'm at the point where I'm extremely frustrated with CUNY architects and I would almost rather just look elsewhere and start from, start from scratch.
Back to my point, you had somewhat of a motion there, but it was windy.
I apologize. So I'd like to wrap this in with the exterior table and come back to it in February.
Okay. Can we do that?
Yeah, so what, what was the original motion?
The proposed motion was to authorize the administrator to suspend CUNY's contract. Or design effort, rather.
Suspend work.
Yeah.
Design effort, some.
Well, essentially, I don't think we actually had a motion.
I don't think we had a motion. No, no.
But what Jasper had said was, yeah, he said that he wanted to, you were, you said that you're putting it in a motion after you said it, that you were going, you moved to take care of the important matters and push the rest off till spring.
Correct. So there's something that has to be a part of this that needs to be addressed immediately.
That include maybe getting quotes for an HVAC on a separate local. Doesn't hurt to.
Would that be okay?
It'd be.
I mean, HVAC is something you'd probably be able to get somebody on, I would think.
Yeah, we can get somebody on that.
Yeah.
It's just been tied into this, this proposal previously.
Yeah, and it's not a much smaller operation.
Yeah.
There's too many moving parts with all these things.
That's part of the problem.
We have a motion, you know.
Okay, I'll take a stab at this. I move to authorize the administrator to notify CUNY architects to suspend design effort on the public safety building remodel project and revisit this project in the spring. I also like to authorize Chief Schultz to get quotes on the, on the HVAC.
You don't have to. He can, he's got, he can do it in his own budget.
Okay.
Okay, so motion by Cronin, Cronin, second by Hartinger. Any more in the discussion?
Only other thing is, or only thing I wanna clear is, Chief Finkie, is there any immediate need that you need in this motion?
No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Absolutely. My heartfelt apologies to Mr. Taffey. Because you, I should have thrown you way up front here. You have, you're forty-eight, right?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven? Oh, you gotta be kidding me. Unbelievable that you're right in line. I'm, I'm very sorry. I, I've been watching you all night and I enjoy talking to you and for me not to move you to the front, I cannot believe I did that, so I'm very sorry. All right, so here we are, forty-seven, discussion and action on development agreement terms for plat of inner springs first edition. It was your pleasure.
Can I, sir, can I first clarify here that what is being proposed is not standard? And I should not probably have worded it as my recommendation, but this is a proposal to the board on an alternate for how this plat is being, how the development agreement on the plat would be, you know. Michael, can you go to that cloud drive and show the plat is up there?
Are you in favor of this?
So the.
Yes.
He is. So just to clarify what is in here. The plat was filed in total, inner springs first edition. Are you able to get to that cloud drive, Michael?
Yeah, and technical difficulties back here.
Or, what, what? Okay.
You want the other one first?
First one, it's up, it's in the, oh, I'd like to get it kind of colored. There you go. That's a better, that's easier to see. All right, so the plat in its entirety is what was approved for development by the resolution of the board and plant commission of the board. So I think it was September, Ethan had us, had contacted us about doing this in phases. And the pure way to do it would be to separate the plant and then two separate, two separate plats, which would have taken more action by plant commission and the board and more cost to file those separate things. I guess the factor that comes into play is the requirement then to have a security or have security typically in the form of a irrevocable letter of credit for the public improvements so that there's, there is security for the village to finish those improvements if they're started and not finished. So proposals to do a western half was identified as A up there, phase one. And phase two would be left alone until sometime before twenty twenty-five. It would be completed between now and twenty twenty-five, but not starting in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So clause in the development agreement is proposed as phasing with phase one on the western streets or street, phase two, the eastern street. Provide the LOC for the improvements on phase one now. Security for phase two prior to beginning public improvements. Those improvements to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-five. You would also like early foundation approval on the north street. I don't know that, I can't quote the name of that street. It was a green.
Green Pastures line.
Pastures. Sorry. Floor plaque, one, single building with four units. Like a townhouse, townhome, everything. And a, and then also building permits, early foundations for two twin home lots, which I believe would be on the south side of that street. And that would be prior to completion of sewer water base, street base. And then also written in the development agreement, lot sales or building permits issued for phase two until public improvements are installed under condition of, typical conditions of the agreement. I guess the discussion we had on Friday was that until there's a contractor with a, with a commitment to do the work and somehow they, they don't finish, then the security is for us to help make sure that gets finished, so. And this is non-standard. This is the case the village board is actually perhaps taking more risks than our, than our ordinance provides for. I'm advising you of that, I guess. I, I know there's, that this has happened in the past here. There was a plover has currently not been asking for security. They have not been having issues with it. But I know that they're also talking about going, you know, the way of requiring the security like it's standard practice in every municipality. But today is strange economic times. I know that some of the things that Keith has discussed with me at a couple of occasions, we have probably some heated conversations about it. But I guess my, my job is just to advise you of what it is and you are able to make whatever decision it is you wish to make on this.
Looking for a motion?
So we, do you have an offer of bond or a, a letter of credit or anything before this?
Can I, can I explain? It is being offered on phase one.
Should we get it on the floor first?
Yes, we should, to be, to be above board.
Looking for a motion? I will make that motion. Now looking for a second.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Hartinger. Now for the discussion. Go ahead, Keith.
If you go back to the map. Just to clarify what Keith was saying. We have this entire thing approved by, by commission of the board. That bid came in at one point nine million and that's months ago or a few months ago. And it doesn't make sense for, I, I, I'm not gonna do the whole project right now. So rather than replanning A and have that plat and then eighteen months from now or twelve months from now replat B, we're just saying, let's just approve this whole thing. We are putting, you know, I, I am very frustrated that I, I have a loan approved for the whole pro, I have a loan approved for project A, or if I wanna do A and B, I have a loan approved. The process is I get loan approval for A, it's gonna be around eight, nine hundred thousand dollars. And then I have to do an LOC guaranteeing that funds and that costs me one percent of the total funds. And, and what, what Keith is suggesting is that I also put up a line of credit for B and I'm saying, I'm not putting up a line of credit. For B, it's raw land. I'm not doing anything. If it doesn't get done, it doesn't get done. That happens all over. I can, I can show you plots all over Marathon County. It's not often, but it's, but they are in every municipality. It's not a big deal. I'm not putting up security for B because I'm not building it now. And then I just suggested that we do a three-year. What, what's, what's our agreement called? Development agreement. I would like to not have to put up any security. In Wassa, I, I put up a, a percentage of lots. There's, there's lots of ways to do this. In Clover, I am not, I'm doing a two point four million dollar project in Clover. And I'm disappointed that, that Weston is having conversations with Clover suggesting that they're wrong by not doing them because I don't, I don't need that. I don't need another headache where I have to, I have to borrow two point four million, then I have to guarantee two point four million. And I already have the money.
We're, we're actually calling Clover and telling them?
We're having discussions with them. Yes.
Wow.
So.
Holy mackerel.
This is what we certainly do in a lot of other cases. There's a, there was just a meeting among the local municipalities, we talked about this very thing. Does everybody require security? That's a common practice. Did I call Clover to confirm what they're doing? Yes. I did not suggest they do what they do or do something different.
You just suggested in this meeting what they're doing is not standard practice. Every municipality has their right to do their own practice.
I didn't say they didn't. I'm just asking what they do. So this is not, I'm trying to do my job, which is to inform the board of what our ordinance says. We wanna go against it, that's our decision.
Our ordinance is, our ordinance. Our ordinances can be changed. We've been changing them since I've been on the board for five years. I mean, we're changing stuff all the time. We've got all kinds of stuff in there that, that I've got heartburn over. And just because we make it an ordinance doesn't make it, you know, right. Maybe we should be calling on our municipalities and finding out what they're doing to help people build.
I just wanna, I just wanna work together and have, and, and be, and, and be wanted to develop in the, in the.
We want you here. We want you here and thank you.
So, I, so, yeah, I think Keith was just doing his job trying to, trying to give us the best information we had in, in following our ordinance. But yeah, this, this is definitely a unique situation and yeah, I'm fine with deviating from our ordinance because of the unusual times.
Okay, I guess I'm lost.
Okay.
A and B, A is the only one you're gonna do at this point in time. B is gonna stay vacant land. So you want your plat, however, is going to include A and B that you're gonna register?
And B, and B is also a part of the development agreement to be completed before the end of twenty twenty-five. But yes.
And we are gonna have no guarantee whatsoever that, that economy-wise, B doesn't happen or, I don't know. What, I, I've never had, I don't think I've ever had it where we completely left ourselves liable.
Liable? We have no money in this game. He's got all the skin in the game. We don't have any money in the game.
Other than taking over the stuff at the end. So.
What would we take, what would we take over at the end?
Whenever he puts in his infrastructure in, in side A, if he doesn't plan anything with B, you know, we, we're not obligated to finish it, but he also shouldn't sell lots. The problem is you'll have a planted lot with no improvements. That's, that's the issue.
And the village would be on the hook to put the improvements in.
But we could also special assess.
Lots could be sold theoretically.
Or vacate the plat.
Okay.
So the other, the other thing we can add into the development agreement is him signing a waiver of special assessment notice and hearings. So that people, if something blows up, I suppose, and we do end up keeping the plat as it is, I guess that people that, that might take those lots, you know, I, I think this is a far-fetched scenario as we talked about it Friday.
What is the topic about that?
I don't remember.
Is the waiver of?
Well, I'd call it a waiver of assessment notice and things. It's a, it would be a formal, it's, it's something that's needed in order for people to understand or agree that they're gonna pay for public improvements on, you know, on their property here that, that benefit their property. So it would be, you know, some of this becomes a bit of belt and suspenders. And I, I, I know the frustration that you, we've heard this before.
Well, I mean, we can't possibly know the frustration. We're, we're not, we don't owe the money, you know? It's, it's not ours to, to do. You have no idea what the economy is gonna do. You know, I remember going down to Florida and just seeing everything just stop, you know? But I think this is prudent. I think this is fine.
Was it more?
I'm sorry. Yep, Keith.
So just if Jennifer said that the plaque could, if a bad case scenario happens, no one's gonna develop it. So, and I talk about, about Ridgeview subdivision because I bought it. I bought it from Inner City. The village had the same, you guys aren't gonna develop it. You guys did nothing over there. And it wasn't, it was a, it was a mess. It was a huge mess and it cost me more to develop it than if I would start it from scratch. But I bought it as a project. So, so that's an example of, of where there was a plat that was approved and developed, whatever, and you didn't have security. And then, and then you approved to sell eight lots to Rennie, which, which made it even harder to develop. And then, so when I negotiated with Inner City, you at that time owned it, I, I had to negotiate because you're developing a street and you only got houses on one side of the street, so it cost you twice as much to develop those six lots. Anyhow, it's happened in the village. I'm the one that bought it and approved it. It, I, you know, it could be the other way around. I don't know. I'm, I, I've got every penny that I've ever made invested in this subdivision and in Clover. And, and I'm, I'm gonna do the best that I can. And if something bad happens, it does become your problem. But it's gonna become your, that, that could be the case either way if the, the bank gets a solvency. We're, we're being prudent. We're trying to finish the subdivision. We're trying to develop new, new priced quad homes, twin homes. And so we have some lower level options, some lower priced options. Our cheapest home right now is two sixty-nine-nine. I don't know that we're gonna get much below two forty-nine-nine out of, with the quad homes or the twin homes, but that, we're just trying. You know, I'm trying to spend about one point. 1.2 million dollars to, so I can offer another product and get started. And I, and I don't want, I, I, that's half, a little less than half of what I have to develop if I do the whole thing.
That, that Wanta division, subdivision was sitting idle for years, decades. Who finished it?
Well, we did, right?
Yep. Who finished, uh, Wyland, all the, Kerry Garnet started it, who finished all that?
Yeah, we did. And this, and we, we did this one over here too, that was.
And you're, you're back in Weston because who called you? Who called you one day and, and asked to come back and build here?
You?
No, him, Keith.
Oh yeah, Keith, yeah, you're right. Yes.
I'm looking for Keith.
After he became administrator.
Keith called him up when he became administrator and asked him to go back here and.
That's true.
Welcome them back to the community to build.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Well, you reminded me of that several times.
I don't, I think that my frustr, I think Keith understands my frustrations because we, we talk a lot, I don't.
You're, you're both, you're both trying to protect.
I just.
He's trying to protect and you're trying to protect, I agree.
Yeah.
All right.
President Maloney, may I ask the verbiage of the motion? Cause I never really got the verbiage.
Motion was, um, oh, I made a motion to approve.
The recommended, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, you're right, I didn't, I just said I'll make that.
Yeah, I didn't actually get the verbiage, what was it?
So.
I apologize, just for clarification.
And if you did not make a second to that.
Though the recommendation though was for the surety because that's in a, in accordance with our, our, our normal operation for, for Weston, but is that correct?
Well, I, I, I'm going off of what he, he doesn't want to recommend, but I, so.
You can refer to the, so the points in the, in the report with the changes that Phase Two would be completed by the end of 2024. The early foundations would be for, I guess, was there actually four separate lots up there, I think, for that four unit?
Phase Two is be completed by the end of 2025.
I said, okay, I'm sorry, 2025 instead of 2024. And the early foundation is for a four unit. And those four, that four unit is actually four separate little lots up there on the plat, isn't it?
It's a, it's a four unit quad home building for zero lot land homes. We'll build against one building, four separate addresses, parcel numbers, lot numbers.
Okay. And then that would also, that would also include two twin home lots which are on the south side of, of that North Street. The remainder of the motion, or remainder of that is most true then.
So getting back to, getting back to the first question as to the language of President Maloney's motion, I'm assuming you, uh, you intended the proposed motion?
Yes, correct. Either, either one of those, the recommendations or?
Security is furnished for the streets on the west side, phase one. Security for phase two comes at the time he gets a contract or making those improvements and finishing them by 2025.
Okay, motion, do you agree on your second or not?
I, yeah, I guess I'm confused because from what you said, nobody else is asking you to provide a surety or underwriting for your developments, is that correct?
He, he's agreed to this as of right now, but he's just making a statement that Clover is not requiring it, yep.
Well, it, there's just, every municipality has different regulations, this is the most strict that I've dealt with.
Yep, okay. So yes, on your second, you're still staying? But you want to change it more lenient?
Yeah.
Oh, you do? I'm, he's agreeing, he's agreeing right now.
If he's agreeing with it, then I'm good with it, but I, I think we should revisit it.
Yes. Yeah, last call, okay, all right.
Well, I guess my question, if in our ordinances or wherever it is, we require that, don't we?
But, but he's saying that in this time that we're in right now, he's going to allow that.
Right, but I'm, okay, but we somehow or another, I don't know, we're violating our own ordinance.
It's, it's, you know, it's, it's, if you're saying that we.
Well, I'm not saying right or wrong, but I'm just saying, we're violating our ordinances.
Ordinarily, um, with, with developing, especially with developing, we should probably follow, uh, follow our own ordinances, but in this singular instance, especially with inflation being as, being as high as it is, we, I, I don't see, especially with getting security on this, my, my concern about risk is, uh, is addressed.
Is addressed. Uh, did I hear you call the question?
No.
Oh, you didn't?
Okay, okay. It's required right now to be approved.
What's that?
Is it, are we, do we need to approve this, this meeting?
We have to move forward.
Okay, cause I, I'm just, was suggesting that we go next meeting that we revise our ordinances so we're not violating our own ordinances.
I think that would give Administrator Donner a more hard burn than any of us here. If he felt, I, I don't, I don't believe he would recommend that.
Oh, does he?
Well, I don't believe our legal counsel, I don't think any legal counsel.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with a lot of the stuff they do too.
Well, that's my.
Yeah, I know, but you, you're still doing it.
I just don't want to hold him up, that's all.
Yep. I think if he's happy.
Yeah, if he's happy.
He's great, I'm happy, I want Denian to continue to want to work with us and, and follow the homes here, so.
Can I ask a question?
Whoa, 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 I thought we heard a call.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, so we asked, hold on to the question. Uh, the question, the question, uh, by Zagami, second by Feeny. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So Kerry.
The question is now called. The question is now called.
Oh, yes, okay, now, uh, on the motion.
It's going on the motion.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, did you have something?
I just, I don't understand what's required for, because I think it's vague. I think the, um, the ordinance is vague on what's required for, um, credit, not LLC, doesn't have to be an LLC, it says that we have to have some sort of.
Secure.
Security.
Right.
So it's, so, you know, why, why not a signature, is a signature bound security? So I don't think you're violating your ordinance, you can just say, you know what, is, he's, he signed a signature bond. I just don't have, there are options, there are other options.
A pretty heavy head nod here from our finance director.
Voting in the way of an ordinance or development agreement, is security acceptable to the board?
Security acceptable to the board.
So you guys could say, I don't even LLC, you guys could say.
Well, I'm just concerned we're voting on something that's violating our ordinance.
Then is this something that we?
Raise out of it, fine.
If it's in the subdivision pool, yes, well, it basically goes to the board by the commission.
Security acceptable to the board.
Yep, yep.
All right, Michael, I can find this section.
Yeah, I mean, the wording in the ordinance almost like is provide for the surety to guarantee completion of the public improvements and the other obligations of the subdivide are under the agreement or this chapter.
So the development agreement speaks to the form of security.
It would be very helpful if I could just sign it and, and if my bank says I got a loan for it, go ahead and do it. And then I can sign an agreement that say, that this developer agreement tells you that I'm going to do it. And if I'm good for it, I'm good for it, if I'm not, that, that's why you, you know, you talked about a belt and suspenders and a hat on a hat and an umbrella in the rain count. We have all those things and more.
Okay.
So.
I think we can, we can look at it at planning if we need to.
Yeah.
Bring it back to the board. Forty-eight? Okay, forty-eight. Bird Street Reconstruction Change Order, number one, Michael, ten seconds. Nine, eight.
Or I guess, uh, items left, uh, off the bid tab in the plans, um, Switlicks, the contractor, their submitted costs were under what, you know, DOT estimated costs are, um, there are other things that are going to be coming in under budget, so overall the project will still be under the original bid price.
Motion to approve.
By Ermeling, second by Cronin, was that Cronin?
Yep.
Uh, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, now forty-nine, Camp Phillips Road and Shorey Avenue Sanitary Sewer lining project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Zagami, second by Hardinger. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, fifty, purchase of replacement hydraulic press.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, fifty-one, Schofield Avenue Intersections, Mester and Ryan Engineering Analysis Project.
I move toward, uh, well, just motion to approve.
Second.
Speed it up.
Uh, mo, motion by Cronin, second by Feeny. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, fifty-two, Ryan Street and Trotzer Lane Lift Station Change Order Number Two. Move to approve, move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ermeling. Uh, the, on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, God bless you, Hardinger. Fifty-three, Weston Avenue and Ryan Street Intersection Design.
I approve.
Move to approve by Zagami.
Second after discussion.
Is there a second?
Not for me.
Okay. Now, what we're talking about here is the design of a roundabout?
Correct.
Okay, yep, so I'll second it. Uh, second by Feeny. I won't be voting for this.
Oh, okay.
At $500,000, I won't be voting for this.
Neither.
Nope.
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yep.
So Newsline nine, um, after the, the meeting, uh, last week, ran a story about funding for an official design of roundabout that would be placed west of Ryan Street, was approved last Monday, expected to cost roughly $36,000 for design. And, and I don't know what the timeframe was, but there's 141 comments on that story and not one of them just thought that was a good idea. So, um, I, I'm curious what, uh, was pushing for a roundabout at that intersection?
I, at the meeting, I, I asked if we could look at a stop sign and the consensus between the rest of planning and Public Works was that a roundabout is, is safer, so I'm only one voice, I.
I agree.
And I, and I just, I imagine.
Safety, just a safety issue because Weston Avenue, people drive like it's an open runway, 56 miles an hour. And that intersection helped to slow down the traffic.
Yeah.
So it's a safety issue, if we can save one life, I think it's worth it more than that money we're going to spend on that.
I, I think a four-way stop sign, uh, with red flashing lights to see if that'll work for a couple of years and.
But there is.
But a hundred, a hundred, yep, there's, now it's a one-way stop, but it's not a four-way.
Right.
And it's a thoroughfare for Weston is Jade of Camp Phillips, solid.
Yeah.
So that's our fault, that's our fault for not putting something in there, but a hundred grand to engineer that baby? I mean, I would just say, okay, uh, any of the 36 in DePere and Green Bay and Appleton, just park it over here and then 400 grand to build it? Mm-mm, sorry. I had two, I had two calls. Yeah. This, this week from, from folks in the village asking me not to approve this. I'd put a roundabout at Schofield and Camp Phillips in a heartbeat, in a heartbeat, but not out there. For, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, and that, that was, I.
So, so we've got a motion and a second and we're on the discussion, do we still want to discuss?
So I, I don't, I like that a lot.
We, I think that.
What's the option do I have here? I guess a motion against it.
Yeah, yeah, just vote it down, that's all. We have, we have a motion by Zagami and a second by Feeny, right?
So, so, uh, my, my piece is we do need a roundabout up, out there, but not for half a million dollars. That's, that's the way that's, or that's the way that I'm looking at it. And as to your, uh, your question, trustee Hardinger, uh, it's, so there's a motion to approve. Now, if we vote to approve, it goes into effect. If there's more nays and we vote it down, then, uh, then it's dead, you know, we, we don't get it. I mean, there's, I mean.
I guess my, my question is if, if we do vote against or if, if there's enough votes to support it, we have an option at that point to suggest that maybe we do a four-way stop in the meantime or ask Chief Schultz or Wodowski about what their independence are, like a much lower cost saving measure?
I do have one comment, I think.
Mike said.
Chief.
I just hear the safety concern, wouldn't, we want to know what the number of traffic crashes are at that intersection?
That would be wonderful.
It would be like one of the last year apparently.
I mean, Schofield and Camp Phillips would be probably number one. Uh, Camp Phillips and Weston.
Dale? I can't, yes, Camp Phillips and Schofield Avenue, absolutely.
Ross Avenue and Camp Phillips.
Traffic crashes at Weston and Ryan, I can't think of one.
Yeah.
So.
I had, I had a lady that lives right up the road there, she said, well, last year she's had one that she.
I'd have her look. And I could get that data for you, how far back do you want to go?
Mike would.
I was just going to say the current design has a left turn lane being added on Ryan Street and really, or left turn lane on Weston Avenue at Ryan Street and then nothing on Ryan Street except for the, the stop sign staying there. So just letting you know that the current design was the left, adding a left turn lane and then leaving the through traffic, um.
And are we, are we designing that for truck traffic? I, that's all I've ever heard is that we're designing it for truck traffic.
It probably would be made to accommodate future truck traffic, I mean, if, you know, based on other discussions, I mean, someday.
Someday is always someday, I mean, truck traffic, I mean, my heavens, if we're going to entertain truck traffic there, again, I'm going to go back to Jay.
Yep.
So I think we'll leave it up to the chief to look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably.
So, um, did I hear somebody call the question? No? No. I'll call the question. At quarter after eight?
No, we, we can, we can probably.
Oh, yeah, nope, now, Tasty Feeny just called the question. So we have a motion to call the question by Feeny, second by Hardinger. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, question's been called. Now, uh, all in favor of.
Roll call.
Roll call. All in favor for a roundabout, uh, at Weston Avenue and Ryan Street Intersection Design and, uh, a roll call vote has been requested.
Cronin?
No.
Ermeling?
No.
Feeny?
No.
Hardinger?
No.
Wyland?
No.
Zagami?
No.
Hello? Oh, thank you, no. Well, I was doing Elfo in my head and I'm going, wait a minute, wait, that's the one I get to go to lunch to? So it's, um, not, not been approved, the noes have. Uh, okay, fifty-four, request for school speed zone signage on Camp Phillips Road. Great letter, uh, Keith?
Um, yeah, I can just start real quickly, that's been a concern, we've got numerous complaints about, um, kids crossing, it's the only school in Weston that has a major It's the only school in Weston that has a major thoroughfare where kids cross. We do have one crossing guard there. Um, it's my opinion that that intersection is, that area of the school zone in Weston Elementary needs to be better lit. Um, looking at the signage for the school zone, it says when children are present, if you're going southbound, it's north of Ross Ave, which you can't really see. And then going northbound, um, it's fifteen miles an hour, but I think we need flashing lights. I think we need better signage. We've been enforcing that very, very, very rigorously the last week, morning and evening, and we're writing a lot of tickets in there. Some of the feedback I'm getting from patrol, obviously it's a school zone, but we believe it needs to be better. Um, sign and warning and saying when lights are flashing, like that sign up there says is a lot more um, obvious to when to use the twenty mile an hour speed limit because otherwise you're driving and says, well, if you see the sign that says kids are, when kids are present, we don't see them until you're there. Um, so I, I just think it's an area of, of concern that needs to be addressed. Uh, I met with Michael Keith and, um, Scott Pietro and there's a bunch of us there that, um, the bid was around $10,000 for those two signs with solar LED beacons and programmable, um, you know, programmable timeframes where you can, you can program it out for a year on, you know, the time before school and after.
Well, Wausau has something like that, don't they? Because it's very.
What I'm saying, the ends has got a pretty nice, they actually have two guards there. But, um, Michael, when you, when you, um, came back with an email there that we've got to check with, uh, county, the county, because it's their road.
Yeah.
I couldn't help it. I didn't want to be a jerk and normally I am, but it's our kids.
Yeah, no, I know.
It's our kids. And I know, I know you know that too. It's our kids. I don't, I wouldn't wait. I would ask for forgiveness, forgiveness later. Yep. And get them lights up there and make a tremendous amount of parents happy and kids safer.
The reason I asked the county was to see if they would pay for it instead of us.
Oh, I think we're going to send them the bill.
What'd they say?
But they said they, they will put the sign up, but if we want to do flashing lights, things like that, that's on us because we're enhancing the requirements of the.
I mean, if we, I mean, it should be a safety issue period, so we should just pay for it.
Yeah, so we got.
I bet you this whole would jump in on this. I'm going to ask them. I just, yep, that'd be good. Thank you. I will.
They've got money for all these situations.
Okay, fifty-four, attorney referrals.
Oh, I, we have to move on.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Feeny, second by Ermeling. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Thank you all. Um, standard procedure, uh, any attorney referrals by the board? Hearing none. Uh, we're going to move to, move to closed session. Um, let's take, um, let's take, uh, properties and public funding one first. So move to closed session. Uh, per Wisconsin Stat 19.85, parent one, parent two. Delivering or negotiating to purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining, please do require a closed session.